Brian's accent tonight. Tyler?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
John's accent, Deb?
Here.
I'm here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, so we're good. So, welcome everybody. This is exciting times for Gilbert, obviously. We've just successfully passed a very great bond and we'll get to that in just a moment with some additional things. But, what we thought we would do to start out is just do introductions. And you don't have to go into great detail, Wade. I mean, we don't need to know favorite ice cream or anything. But, if you would, this is primarily for this team up here that's going to be working with us over the next 12 to 18 months. But, we'll go around the room, name, and then what, if you're with the staff, what you do, and if you're not, if you're a community member, what project you're going to be working on. And so, since Jay's standing, we're going to start with Jay and go through the back. So, again, this is primarily for the Hala team and the Story Construction team, and they'll introduce themselves here.
Can I add one thing, Tyler?
Sure.
Just so that you're not nervous about it, we do, for all of our board meetings and our work sessions, we do record those. So, we have that going. We also have it so that if people miss tonight, they can take that and watch it and be caught up. So, just wanted to let you know, in case you're wondering what's going on over there.
Jay Grantner, I run youth baseball for, I don't know, five years now, and now the double-A baseball, and pretty much anything else that people ask me to do.
Mike Cruz, middle school PE and coach.
Wade Nelson, community member, and I'll be on the baseball, softball stadium facility with Tim Pizzetti asleep.
Nathan Pullen, community member on quit the Ag.
Jeremy Elgin, baseball coach. We work with Tim Pizzetti on the baseball project and softball project.
Rick Carr, community member, I've been working with Tim preparing the existing baseball and softball.
Virginia Beecher directs plays and musicals and whatnot, and I'll be on the auditorium and music edition.
Karen Rogers, high school vocal.
Jenny Thomas, fifth grade band. And I'll be in with the intermediate renovations.
Amy Griffin, intermediate principal.
Steve Wolf, director of maintenance here in the Gilbert district.
Vic Vanderpool, high school principal.
Tom Berryke, baseball softball repair.
Michelle Jacobson, intermediate eighth.
Tim Pizzetti, athletic director, and working with these guys back here.
John Davis, high school ag education.
Carol Miller, high school ag education and middle school.
Troy Stow, middle school technology and middle school classrooms.
Paul Ronzi from the community, going to help with Ag Ed and BoTech.
Katie Charleston, I teach language arts in middle school, and I'll be working with some middle school people.
Chris Stelke, Gilbert elementary secretary, been working on the new office place.
Devon, Gilbert elementary secretary, been working on Stacy.
Stacy Edwards, elementary principal. I'll be working with these lovely ladies.
Mike Gelson, middle school principal.
Kerry Clark, curriculum director.
Mike Caverdy, community, I'll be working on the fine arts edition.
Stacy Snick, middle school PE teacher, youth softball coordinator and assistant softball coach.
Iron Ginger, high school band direct, high school band director, and I'll be working on the high school fine arts.
I'm Bonnie Cole, and I work at Middle School High School in Gamma Good Summer Science, so I'll be working with the CTE school vocational.
Chrissy Lyndon, high school middle school art.
Jen Quire, high school art. You may be here.
Will you do introductions as we get going, or do you want to go ahead and use those? Yeah, let's do a quick introduction of our team here, yeah. Okay, let's start there, just work our way around.
Lindsey Beecher, superintendent.
Gail Hopkins, business manager and board secretary.
Bart Baumgartner, assistant project manager for Hala.
Alright, Sam Stagg, principal at Hala and also the primary contact for Hala.
Brent Carr, pre-construction manager with Story Construction.
Adam Popish, project manager, Story Construction.
Mike Espeset, president of Story Construction.
And Tyler Holt, board member, privileged to work with the board for almost seven years now.
Kim Moesman, board member.
How many years?
Thirteen.
Okay, there you go.
I had board all like, three months. Six months or something.
Good.
Fresh.
Yeah, so, yeah, welcome on board, and glad you're buckled up, Deb. So, we'll get to know a little bit more about the roles that Hala and Story will play as we go through this evening. Sam said our goal is between 90 minutes and two hours. Right. So, closer to 90 is always good. But, we're here because we had, oh, Andy, got to introduce yourself, favorite ice cream and what state were you born in?
I grew up on, oh, Andy, I grew, I grew up on Schwan's chocolate marshmallow.
Good. But, thanks, and as we mentioned at the beginning, I mean, this is all because we had a very successful bond. I do want to recognize, Mike's here, Mike Caverdy, yes, not this way. Mike Caverdy and Ryan Galing, who's not here, but he served on the bond committee. And Tom's better half, Carol Berryke. So, those three led our bond committee, and also I want to recognize Amy and the Communication Committee. It was very instrumental. And Lindsey, who went to, did you ever add up all the meetings you went to? I bet it was a lot. So, thanks to that group for the successful bond. As we'll go through, I mean, that was really the end of the second phase that we did as an administration and board together, and we're going to walk through some of that background tonight. Essentially, we've established the projects. Those had to be established in order for that bond to be positioned and then passed. And so, tonight, we're going to be walking through what's going to be the next phase, which is the pre-construction. And we're asking for your involvement to help with the final design as we go into these projects. So, we hope that it's informational. We want for it to be informal, so if you've got questions, please ask. That's what it's about. And essentially, the objective is for you to understand where we're at in the process and what role we would ask you to play as we finish up and get ready for these construction projects. So, without any further ado, does that make sense to go to the next slide or anything else? Sam, so. Potentially? Yeah. Yeah, so what I mentioned, I'll just walk through this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Lindsey. We started planning probably almost three years ago, and many of you were involved in that. Essentially, we're looking at the expansion and growth of the community, and as a board, we talked about, well, what do we need to be doing to be ready for that? That kicked off what was a formal Phase One planning with the Hala group almost two years ago. And through that, we basically looked at, well, what do we think we need? We looked at the needs of the community, the funding capacity of the community, and tried to take our best guess at the enrollment forecast for the community. And essentially, out of that Phase One, the board came to the conclusion that we needed to do a number of different projects at this time to continue to enhance our facilities, and that's why you're here. Which then led into Phase Two, which was some very, very specific planning that has been done to say, this is the prioritized list of those projects, which totaled almost $14 million that we put forth for the bond. So, there's been over two years of planning put forth so far, again, with the successful, the culmination of the successful bond. We've been working with the Hala group just over the last few months. The board also entertained the opportunity to work with the construction manager. And basically, what that means is, Story Construction has been hired to represent us in these projects as we go into the construction phase. And as they described when they were talking to us, there's a lot of benefit to do that already in the pre-construction. So, they're going to be working closely with the Hala group, basically, from here on out. This initial phase is pre-construction, design before we get into construction, and then, basically, you'll have feet on the ground helping us and, basically, helping Lindsey out from a standpoint of being extra eyes and feet on the ground rather than Lindsey having to, Lindsey had a construction hat on half the time when we were building the high school, and we said, well, he's got plenty of other things to do. So, we've got Story Construction involved with this process now as well. So, we're now going into design and construction phase, and I guess just a brief review, Lindsey, if you want to walk through where we're at for priorities.
I would say the same thing that Tyler had mentioned about, it's exciting when you can have this type of thing happen. We've got a roomful of people here, and everyone, all the help that we've had as we moved along. But, as we've went to the different meetings and talked about things, I'm sure that you've heard these before, but just to hit some of the priorities and expectations, some of the things that we looked at when we looked at this overall project, and there was a lot of people involved in this overall project, but we looked at making sure that we have adequate educational space for all buildings. That's probably, you know, one of the top priorities that we had had there. We also wanted to make sure that we upgraded the systems to improve the comfort, the safety and security. And again, some of those, you know, are, you see a lot in the news today on some of those. To upgrade the educational environment, so it's 21st century learning, the vision that we have for that, you know, we're trying to make it so that we're just not going to create the same type of classroom that we've had maybe in some of the other buildings. We're going to try to create some different things, some different types of learning environments, so that it's different than maybe what it was when you and I were going to school. And then finally, we were looking at, and we wanted to make sure that we included some big parts in that, the fine arts, the ag education, the athletics, and other projects. So, those were the things that the board did with a lot of work and development, that's, those are the things that we put for our priorities and expectations.
Alright, cool. So, I'm going to take over now and talk for a little while, but thanks for raring your name tags, but you can go ahead and take those off. Brent said he's promised to learn everyone's name before the meeting, so it's not necessary, anyway. But, let's talk seriously, to have nearly 85 or 85% pass, a lot of that effort went is, came from this room, so we appreciate that, it's been fantastic. Been a great group to work with. We've already been meeting with Tyler and Lindsey and John, a handful of others, administrators, beginning to establish, along with Brent, Adam and Mike, beginning to establish some deeper, maybe some tighter expectations of the project beyond the priorities here. So, I'm just going to walk through some of these, so it gives you an idea of the type of project that we want to see develop over these next handful of months. And we're going to be locked arms for the next almost two years, and so, we want to make sure everyone's on the same page. So, that's part of what the role of this process is. So, what are the key components for a successful project outcome? So, good strategic engagement with the teams, patrons and leadership. And that starts tonight, right, which is really important. Simple process centered around each project with clear timeline and milestones. We're going to walk through those milestones later on, and so everyone has a very clear understanding of what their role will be and the timeframe that we expect them, okay? So, we'll talk about that. And then, good communication among the team and the district leadership. We're going to present to the board on a monthly basis as part of that communication, but we want to make sure that this group in this room, all 50 some of us or whatever, are on the same page and we're communicating well, okay? What's the district hope to achieve from this project? Quality work done on time and within budget, right? And that's not a whole lot different from what we hear from other districts, right? But, we're going to work hard to hit those priorities, that's important. What keeps you up at night, right? So, potential role confusion. There are a lot of people here, there's a lot of new faces, there's a lot of potential to, for the train to go off the tracks, right? But, we're going to work hard that people know what they're doing and when they need to be doing it, okay? Lack of compliance with process and timeline, so that kind of is a piggyback from that previous one. We have a very detailed process that we've laid out, we will share that with you, we want to hit that, we want to hit those dates and milestones, okay? Cost overruns, that keeps us up at night as well. We're going to work hard internally between the design team and the construction team, both during the design process and construction process to watch the budget, okay? That's important for us. And then, construction delays, you know. One of the values of having a construction manager on board early on is to help strategize. These are the guys that are kind of helping managing the people swinging the hammer and have a little bit more insight into the construction processes that we can now fold into the design of the building, right? So, that will help early on with some of the construction delays. So, we're going to work proactively to help those problems. We also establish some project guiding principles. What will make this project a remarkable experience, right? So, good communication, we talked about that. Strong team orientation. We're a team here right now, right? So, we want to make sure that we're all communicating really well and that we have a singular goal, or maybe four goals, right, with those priorities that we already listed. But ultimately, we want to maintain a student-centered approach because we're here to help the students, right? That's our goal. Okay, proceed with a problem-solving approach. We will have, we'll have problems and issues as we dive into this, many of you will experience that, but we're going to solve those collectively and proactively and approach them in a positive way. We also want to maintain the unique quality of Gilbert, right? Innovation, our proximity to ISU, the work that we're going to do with the vocational ag program. Maintain community commitment and excitement, that's part of what this meeting is doing. Also, looking forward to receiving compliments on the backside. Ultimately, if this thing is successful and we're done, we want to hear all of you as well as other people from other districts say, wow, what a, what a great group of facilities and great group of people who've worked on those facilities at Gilbert. We're hoping to hear that, right? So, we're working hard to do that. Okay, so that gives you an idea of our expectations and priorities. We're going to jump into project team roles, responsibilities and expectations. So, everyone, when you walked in, received a relatively detailed list of the project teams, including both district administrations as well as patrons. And if your name's on that list, great. If you don't find your name on that list, come see me and we'll get it on there. I think I saw everyone who's here on that list, but double-check that. And we're not going to go over that in detail. We will talk about roles and expectations, but we're not going to review everyone's name, we kind of covered that all the way. Okay, first and foremost, we have District School Board. So, you know who these, the players are, John, Brian, Tyler, Kim and Deb. Roles and expectations of the board. So, they will receive monthly updates and status reports from this team at the monthly board meetings, okay? So, they're going to stay aggressive of all the goings-on. And also, they will have the final authority on the project's scope and budget, okay? So, District Board is the kind of the final authority for all things, the projects that are going on, okay? And the next, the next team we have in designation, we're calling these folks the District Project Leadership, you know, creative name, I know. Where we have Tyler, Lindsey, Gail and Steve. So, they will be involved in a handful of meetings as we prepare things moving forward. Their roles and expectations, confirming the participant list of each project team, that's kind of, we can kind of check that off. Confirmed final scope and services, provides oversight for the district, they're a screen for the board. As things develop, where there's issues or complications, they'll, that'll be, we'll speak with that group before going to the board. They'll be aware of the daily meetings in each phase, pre-con, pre-construction and construction, but not necessarily involved in the daily decisions or the meetings, okay? So, then, within the next group are district administration and patron teams. So, and that's where you can see the project team lists. So, the roles and expectations, we're going to have two design meetings. So, we want you to attend those meetings, okay? And the first meeting, we're targeting to happen before the end of school, and we'll show you kind of a timeframe as we get up here. The, and we have those teams broken down into four major groups that are, once again, represented on this list. We have the 2018 intermediate school and elementary school renovations. Those projects are already kind of underway, they've been, they've been designed and bid, and construction will start shortly. We have Amy Griffin and Stacy Edwards as the project leads there. 2019, middle school and high school additions and renovations, we have, the project leads are Vic Vanderpool, Mike Gelson and Tim Pizzetti. Also, 2019, middle school and high school athletics project, project lead will be Tim Pizzetti. We kind of lumped all of those into a singular project and how it will be packaged in terms of the design and construction, but the teams that you have listed here are broken down a little bit with a little more granularity, okay? This third one here, 2019, elementary school and intermediate school, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, technology improvements, led by Amy Griffin, Stacy Edwards, Steve Olsted and future facilities director. And there's not a whole lot of involvement from a lot of you for that particular project. Most of the involvement that we're, that we're asking of this group will be in that second, the second one, under the middle school, high school improvements, okay? And then finally, 2018 track repairs, project lead is Tim Pizzetti. So, that, those are the four big buckets of projects that we're, that we're working with. Let me dive into, back into kind of our expectations of this group for that. So, we have, like I said, we have, we want to target one meeting before school gets out, which is within the next month or so. And in that meeting, we want to review a schematic design booklet and then offer a design refinement, okay? Let me unpack that a little bit. So, as Tyler mentioned earlier, the process that we've gone through is, we've gone through a handful of phases. Phase Two of the three has been the creation of these projects and the organization of those projects in order to get the bond referendum passed, okay? And so, the board has approved a certain amount of work and description for those projects, of which most of you are aware, all of you are aware of those. And that's the approval that the board made for the bond referendum is the starting point for additional refinement, okay? We're not necessarily wanting to reinvent the wheel, we're adding some refinement that will fill in some of the gaps that we have currently, okay? Is there a question over there? Is that, you're just resting your, resting your hand? Okay, sorry. It's like an auction. Be careful, I'm going to call on you right now. If you do have any questions, just interrupt me, we can, we can talk about that. So, in the first meeting, we're asking for some of the, once again, some design refinement to fill in those gaps. Then, in the second meeting, in September, after the school year begins, we will have taken the information from that first meeting and have folded it into the project, okay? And then, we'll come back to you with another deliverable during design development. We'll dive into some of those specifics and timelines here shortly, but, but that second meeting is basically confirming what you had added and what your input was on that first meeting, okay? So, yep, and we'll show you a stack of drawings and walk you through how those design refinements have been implemented, and you'll say, yep, looks good, or no, I didn't, that's not quite what we meant. Okay, good, we still have some time to fix that before the drawings are done and send them off to get, to get built, okay? So, is that, is that, do you guys understand that your role then in terms of those two different meetings? That were more design refinement, not reinventing the wheel, and then a confirmation? Okay, I'm seeing heads, that's good. I think the key point there is, as Sam said, there's been a lot of work and many of you were involved in that. Yeah. So, we're not starting from scratch, we're starting with what the board approved for the projects. In order for the district to be successful with all these projects, we need to stick to that scope. And so, that's, that's where we're starting, and now, the opportunity is to design within that scope. And so, that's what we're asking, basically, you to do. Give us feedback, and also, I would say, it's not necessarily written, but also be communicators for us out to those that you interact with, whether that's in the school or in the community, so that everybody knows there is input being put into these projects. That's right, that's right. And we're going to talk about everything from color of walls to door frames, color of ceiling, I mean, literally, everything that goes into the space, we want, we want some input on that, okay? And so, there's, while we do have the framework put together, there's still a lot of stuff that has to be decided, so we want, we welcome that input, right? Okay, so that, that covers the involvement of the administration and patron teams. Jumping to design teams, which is the next thing on our list here. So, the architect of short form areas is my company, Hala Architecture. I'm one of the principals, I have two other partners, Chad West and Eric Ramir. They're not here this night, but I'm serving as the project manager and primary point of contact. That's my, that's my role in this game that we're playing here. So, next, we have art.
So, I'm the assistant project manager, so I support Sam, the guy behind the scenes pulling all the strings to, all the levers to get this project to go, and helping direct a lot of the staff within our office to get the project going. The project staff that we have, Eric Ramir, he's one of our other principals, but he's also a structural engineer. He'll do in-house structural engineering for us. We also have Steve Kurtz and Melissa Brooks are kind of helping out the team back at the office.
We'll turn it over to, well, actually, let me, let me speak before we jump to those folks who you don't see here tonight. We have some consultants on board, so some consulting engineering firms, mechanical, electrical, plumbing and technology. There's a group out of Des Moines called KCL Engineering, where a guy named, let's see here, Jordan Voss will lead that team. And then, we also have a civil engineering and landscaping architecture firm, Snyder and Associates out of Ankeny. Tim West will be managing that particular role. Our roles and expectations as a design team will be to lead the design process and lead the conversation involving you refining this design, ensuring the goals of the district are met through the design phase of the facilities, and then the collaborative role during the construction process. So, we don't want to, it's not a, we might be leading this portion of the process, and we'll handle most of the communication at this point, but then, there will be a transition when we jump to construction. And so, I'll hand it over to Brent, story guys here.
Yeah, so, Story Construction, construction manager, we will kind of lead the construction process when we get to that point. We will also participate in the pre-construction process through collaboration with the designer and all of you as, as a team to work through the design process to make sure we're, one, staying within the scope, and two, staying within the budget. So, we will help provide some budget checkpoints along the way to make sure we are staying on track. We also, I guess, work alongside with the board and the district. We're kind of an extension of the district, like Tyler said earlier, so we are looking for, are looking out for the district's interests all through this process. Brent can kind of introduce himself, he'll be working on the pre-construction portion of it.
Yeah, so my role is really in support of Adam. So, Adam becomes our primary contact from beginning to end as project manager. A lot of you guys recognize his face. If you don't recognize his, you probably recognize his kids' face. So, he has, he has some vested interest and some skin in the game to be an advocate for the district in and of itself. So, my role is to, is to come along, Adam, with Adam in the pre-construction phase, help establish some overall milestones and where we're going to go for the journey. And so, we'll walk through some of those milestones here in a little bit, just rest assured that the team Hala and ourselves spent several hours and a couple of meetings whiteboarding all those milestones. We've met with Lindsey and Tyler and went through those as well, just to try to put forth how we're going to approach these projects. Inside our office, we have, we have five dedicated estimators. I oversee that group and work with them as we go through the costing of the design of the projects.
So, one of my past roles, serving as a school board member in Ames, the adjacent district. So, one of the aspects I bring is helping to bring that board perspective, not only to the Story teams, to the Hala team, and make sure that we're staying within the requirements of Dakota, Iowa, et cetera. Secondly, I have the privilege of being able to work on many projects throughout our company with a lot of districts, so it's not just the wisdom that Adam and Brent bring, but we have a lot of wisdom that we can add from other experiences to the effort during design and construction to help. So, I'm here to support these guys and to support you.
And I can't overemphasize the value and the team approach, the value of the team approach that we're, that we're promoting here, you know? Brent alluded to it briefly, but we've already started this process of working together, and we're going to basically be joined at the hip from now until this thing is done and you're walking through the doors. Because of that, that collaborative effort of design... Because of that, that collaborative effort of design and construction is a really great method of delivering and building projects, okay? The information and the knowledge and the resource and wisdom from a construction side folded into the design process can just help strengthen and refine that design, right? Whether it's just to hit the goals of the project or just be more on time, as well as keep the cost down, right? There's a level of information they bring to the table. When it switches to construction, we're there on site, continuing to help answer questions to maybe some confusion that may have been in the design. We can help wrap that up, you know, face to face, you know? And we'll be on site, not as often as these guys are, but readily available, once again, to maintain that collaborative effort. I can't emphasize that enough. I want you to make sure that you understand that. Now, you're also part of this group and this team, which is exciting, so. All right. We're going to jump into schedules and milestones, and I'd like to turn it over to our story construction guys to walk us through. But we've already talked about project groupings. Let's go to that schedule page. Okay, all right. So they're going to talk about maybe the non-traditional delivery method of this a little bit, so we'll start there. The little red highlighted square that you see on the screen just represents the area that, that represents most of the involvement that we'll expect from this team. It doesn't show up on your handout, but that's what the purpose of that is, so there's a highlighting of that effort. The other schedules that we're looking at here are the other three projects, but we're, mostly the involvement that we'll get for this group is on that second one, so.
All right. So probably where I'll start is maybe just a little bit of a paradigm between what you've probably experienced before and what you're going to experience on these projects. So under what I'm just going to call traditional method, you hire an architect, they design a project, they send it out to bid, and you hire a contractor to go get that done. What the district has elected to do on this is hire a construction manager, and what that allows the district to do is to break that packet, or break that project up into different packages. So we'll send out everything out to bid, but we will have specific bid packages. We have multiple prime contractors, so the district is going to hire the electrician, the district's going to hire the HVAC guy, the district's going to hire the drywall. We manage and schedule those people on behalf of the district. So just as we kind of go through this sequence, it's going to be important for you guys just to understand that, those differences, because what that allowed us to do for these projects is to really break this up into what we're calling Phase One, what we're calling Phase Two. So we're going to bid some aspects of the work a little bit earlier, which is going to allow us to start yet this fall. And then we're going to have another bid period for the remainder of the project, really after the first of the year, for the rest of the finishes. So that's where your guys' input's going to come in. It is going to be very valuable in that process. Walk through some of the details of the...
Yeah, so as we looked at the work, we kind of broke it down into kind of four phases. I'm not sure what's going on here. All right, there you go. So one, the first phase was kind of the renovations that are occurring, or soon to occur, in the elementary and intermediate schools.
Which are the safe entries, basically, which I think everybody's aware, those were already approved, and they'll be starting probably the day you leave the school. Amy and Stacy, I don't know what the timeline is, but that's what those are.
The second phase or bucket of work we defined is the middle school and high school additions. So these are the classroom additions at both locations. We also included in there, I guess they're labeled as site improvements here, those are the baseball softball complexes. Those are the new and repairs to those facilities. Third one is the Gilmer Intermediate Elementary School renovations. Those are primarily MEP renovations. There are some renovations to the band room in the intermediate building, including...
MEP standing for...
Sorry, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So upgrades to the HVAC units, the electrical systems, controls, and plumbing. And then the last one are the track repairs. That is the repair to the track that is at this building, the intermediate school. As we broke it up, we listed on the schedule here kind of the different steps of each process in each location. So there is a schematic design, which is a higher-level design packet and information that we'll get, that will be reviewed with you at the very first meeting. We then get into the next step of design, which is design development, so that's much more detail of the design. Construction documents, so Hala will prepare a set of documents that will go out to the street. We'll break them down into bid packages, like Brand said. We'll send them out. People from the area, contractors from the area, will bid on that work, and then we do have a bid date. We'll review those bids, make sure they're within budget, and then move forward on to the next phase. So as this is broken up, we have a bid, the first bid phase there labeled BN1. That is the structure of the middle school and high school additions, the site utilities, the earthwork. That will allow us to get started this fall and get that stuff in the ground before winter hits. The refinement of the design will continue, and then we do have a second bid phase, which will be the rest of the buildings in additions. We try to keep bid periods close to each other to help the market out. The bidders will look at this and make it attractive to subcontractors that if we bid on one, they wouldn't necessarily pass on the next one, but they're kind of concurrent, so they're looking at the same work close to the same time period. We do have some occupancy dates on here, and those specific dates will be refined as we move forward. They're just kind of listed as highlighted at the top in red.
And every time you see a dollar sign, it doesn't mean you spend money. It means that we're checking the budget.
Yes. So we have multiple budget checks throughout the process. At the end of each design phase, we'll say, make sure our design and scope is within the budget parameters that we had.
So Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but all of the project teams that are represented here are actually within that first one?
That one right there.
Right?
Yes. They should, I believe anyway, they're all within this one.
So that timeframe...
High school, high school additions, renovations, and the athletic complexes, correct.
There is one team that will meet for the band vocal, the Finars renovation, and intermediate school.
It's with a different project, okay.
Which is a different project. That's one other small team that'll meet that.
But if you go back to the schedule, essentially, almost everybody's going to be involved in those two timeframes.
Yep. Our timeline is try to get one meeting done before the end of school, which would fall in this period, and then our second would fall here in September.
Which is, we're targeting early September. First meeting is this, within the next month, and then the second one is early September when everyone comes back. Okay?
And by one meeting, we mean one meeting for you. It might mean two dozen meetings for us to meet with all of the individual...
Each individual project team.
Right, one meeting for an opportunity for you and your individual project team to really kind of unload on us, and so we can download that information and get it folded into the project. I will add to that, to the discussion on the schedule, the red dates up here at the top, those are when regular scheduled board meetings are, where we would give an update, the story, and Hala team would give an update to the board.
There's a change in June.
There's a change in June, okay, so we'll get that folded in. And at any number of those board meetings, there might be action items to approve a budget or schedule for the board. We tried to kind of align our schedules with that regular board meeting schedule so that we're not having to wait around for a month to get a board approval. It's trying to be in line with it. The one that we did identify, there's probably one special board meeting in September that we might need to have, just when the bid dates fall, to award contracts for that first phase of work, so. Tried to minimize the number of special meetings.
One other thing, so there's a couple different colors for each line item here, so under the construction administration, a lot of the lighter shading are the procurement times, so the time it takes us to get materials to the site, get HVAC units to the site, that's the differentiation there with those two different colors.
Maybe one last small item. We show it as occupied baseball softball complex. There, that's kind of a technical term, that the owner can occupy that facility, but really what that means is that that's when we start that first growing season for the baseball softball complex, so it's ready for that following spring, summer 2020.
So we're hoping to get two growing seasons on the fields, the fall of 19, and then the spring of 2020, and so baseball softball will have had two growing seasons by the time the sport starts in late spring. What time do you guys start in the spring, baseball softball?
April.
April, okay.
April, personally.
Okay, personally, okay. All right, so yeah, ideally, we have at least two growing seasons. The best time to plant grass is in the fall, right? So that's why we're working hard to hit that timeframe and then allowing that next spring to even maybe do some overseeding as well, so that's the plan. Good clarification, all right. Then we want to occupy middle school, high school, you know, in the summer of 19, in preparation for the school year to start, so that's a emphasis on that. And here we just have some major milestones. We don't need to dive into those details here. That's primarily for your information that you can take a look at, fall asleep to at night if you like, but we'll coordinate the, we're coordinating the efforts of story construction and Hala architecture for those times when we're looking at pricing packages, make sure we're on the same page to keep the project moving, so that's what that represents. Art's going to share a little bit about some of those design package milestones and deliverables, so you'll have an expectation of what you'll see at some of the meetings, so Art, take it.
Yep, and we'll do the best to apparently don't touch the mouse pad, that's the, okay, so it's a little hard to see on the board here, but essentially, at the end of May, June 1st, we're targeting to deliver to the board a schematic design booklet. This is, this is an eight and a half by 11 booklet that has a lot of narrative and data from all of the input from these folks put into this booklet to identify the full scope of the project.
There, you killed it, okay. I'm going to zoom in so you can get a better idea of what that is doing.
So our team has kind of already started putting this booklet together, a kind of rough draft of it, that we will use as our starting point of discussion with each group. And one of the major efforts is to literally go through every space and fill out a room data sheet, is what we call them. And this room data sheet attempts to kind of quantify all the stuff that goes into the room. What kind of floor finish are you expecting? Is it carpet, or is it concrete, terrazzo, whatever it might be? What equipment needs do you have so that I can tell my electricians what, you know, what kind of outlets they need to put in the room? Case work, you know, do we need to plan for any case work? What is that strategy? What is all the stuff that goes into your spaces? And then there's a graphical representation of that on the same page, where we can see some of those elements starting to appear. And that really gives us the rails to run on as a design team to really refine the design and get it ready for contract documents. And also is helpful for the construction management team, as they're starting to do some schematic design estimates, they can start to have some idea of what's the level of finish of this room? Is it, are we talking $100 a square foot, or are we talking $250 a square foot for some of these spaces? So it's a good verification tool for them. There'll also be a lot of narratives talking about from each one of the design teams, from civil, landscape, structural, just describing what's our strategy going to be going forward. And then we really use this schematic design booklet throughout the project as kind of our bible for, and our rails to run on, as I said, so.
So that's essentially the deliverable from this first round of meetings. They will help you to finish up.
Yeah, we're going to take, we'll take a set of this that'll be about 85, 90% done, and that's what we'll show you, and you're helping fill in that remaining 20% of work, or 15% of work, some of the finishes, and just, once again, the refinement of what's been started to get that wrapped up. And so with that knowledge, we'll wrap up this book. This gets, we have a meeting with story construction at that point, and that we have a round of pricing, yeah.
Next, design development. So this is yet another round for us to have some input from the ownership team, the patron team. We have, as the story construction team alluded to, we'll have kind of an early bid phase in September, or we'll call it the building structure, the exterior, and everything outside of it, so we can get going, break ground this fall. So, and then in January, we'll bid all of the interior work associated with that. So there'll be another opportunity for this group to provide a lot more input in September-ish, let's see.
Yeah, September, early September.
Yep, we'll have what we call a 50% design development, construction set. So it starts to look like a full-size set of plans and drawings, where we begin to quantify and arrange all of the elements that we talked about in the schematic design, and actually put it the pen to paper on what that starts to look like. And then the next phase after we've confirmed all of that is really the details. How are we going to put all these things together? So everything from stormwater structures and how that all interacts to door details and how that interacts with the ice cream and all that. But by that time, our opportunity for change is less, but we should have kind of captured everything by that point, and we're just detailing at that point, so. So that's contract documents, all right?
Go back to our presentation here. All right, well, that covers schedules and milestones, and also some of the deliverables that I'm going to be sharing with you, the number six on your agenda there. And I mentioned this briefly earlier, but the, so the communication and the leadership of the team will happen primarily by Hala, Hala Architecture, during this pre-construction design phase, okay? And the point of that is, once you, as the leader of the design component, that's our role. We'll have periodic meetings with this group, but also keeping the board up to date, and the administrative teams, and the district leadership team. Email electronic documentation, we'll utilize that. At the end of each deliverable, we're hosting a Dropbox folder, so the administration and board has access to that. And then also at the end of each deliverable, likely post on the website to keep everyone of this group informed, as well as the general public. Once again, kind of hitting on that community involved. We're once again kind of hitting on that community involvement component, we want to make sure everyone's on top of things. Art's talked about the deliverables. Let's jump to, let's jump to number seven. So number seven is project budget and scope. So budget control during the design process. So we have listed there value-oriented design. One of the hallmarks of our company is designing projects that are, that meet the goals of the district, but also are under or within budget, okay? We're happy to say that 95% of our projects in the 32 years we've been practicing come in on time or under budget. And so we're going to bring that same orientation to this project in terms of the design aspect. Having story construction, part of that team just strengthens that effort, right? And so we get some real-time feedback on the numbers as well. So story construction will manage the primary cost opinion that gets shared with the district, and that is part of the contractual arrangements through the construction management process. And then what we host, there's a cost assessment milestone at each design phase that gets shared with the board. Hala architecture will also maintain kind of internal cost opinion within our office as a comparison point as well. So even though story will manage the primary one that gets shared with the board, we're kind of as a, kind of working on our own cost opinion, just as a point of comparison that we'll meet with regularly. So just give you a little insight onto some of that, how we do some cost opinions. One of the topics that we don't necessarily like to talk about, but is scope creep, okay? So I have scope creep protocol here. Basically what scope creep is, is when we have, with a potential lot of involvement, of a lot of people who have, are kind of vying for different parts and pieces of the project and representing those parts and pieces, it's easy for potentially a project to kind of spin out of control, okay? And potentially maybe too much scope or stuff gets added into the bucket of the project that the budget can't support, okay? So that's what's called scope creep. So we're going to work hard to manage that. And the first line of defense is the Hala and story team to make sure that we have appropriate expectations for what gets into the project with dollars that can support that, okay? If we're having a hard time doing that, we'll fold in district project leadership and administration of each school, and then, but ultimately the school board will have, have the final authority if we need to increase that scope. If there's something that's discovered that like, ah gee, we missed it, or even during construction where we need to implement a change order, ultimately the board will have that, have that control and that final authority. Anything else you guys want to share on some of that? I kind of skimmed over a lot of it, but, okay, all right.
I think it goes without saying, I mean, as we stated at the beginning, there's many projects, the community voted in $14 million, that's what our estimates are for these projects. So our goal is to stick to that and do quality work with all of them. The board already has, you know, long-range plan for what we need for bonding capacity out six, eight, 10 years from now. So we really want to stick to what we've got, which is why we're asking you to be involved and also to help us with designing what we need now, make it right, but also stay within budget. So it's critical for us to accomplish all of these different projects and maintain funding for the future.
I have a question. Everybody knows, okay? So I understand the scope creep concept, obviously there's this idea of maybe open design, just keep going further and further, but there's going to be situations where we learn more down the road, and it's more of a change control situation. I'm just curious to maybe understand, what are the, how do you decide, like, your various escalation points? Do you know what I mean? Like, if you start with Hala and story construction on your first line of defense, is it like cost, a certain cost threshold that you say, whoops, now I've been involved, the project leadership team, and then, oops, another level, you know what I mean? How do you, what's the escalation?
What triggers that, those different involvement?
Yeah, is it a set kind of a process, or is it a gut feel?
Good question.
I'll talk a little bit about, so the Hala and story as the first line of defense. So let's say we get down the road and we realize we're a little bit over budget, our teams will put our heads together and say, what opportunity do we have to save money in other parts of this project that isn't going to impact, isn't going to materially or quantifiably impact some of the ELSA scope? Can we switch from brick to pre-cast concrete as a material that's going to save us some money that nobody is going to, nobody's going to kind of sweat it? So that's why we're the first line of defense, but if we put our heads together and we can't figure out a way to get that included in the budget, then we go to our, what's the next line of defense, was the district project leadership team, you know, whoever it is, the principal or the athletic director, say, hey, we're a little bit over budget, what are some things that we, you know, can either concede or add on? How can we be creative with that? And if ultimately we can't, if this has to be in the budget and we can't find a creative solution, then we go up the chain and say, we explain the process, this is how we got to this point. But, but yeah, it's, it's, oftentimes, we call it the water balloon effect, you try to squeeze, squeeze one part here and it kind of squirts out the other end, so we just try to, we try to keep it all, keep our arms around the scope, so.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, sometimes lots of little changes can add up, and of course you don't want to micromanage or anything like that, but be mindful of that, and I was just curious if there's a certain kind of trigger or something like that, your process makes sense?
The small changes often, you know, we handle internally, we, you know, design is a creative field, you know, it's a lot of give and take, can I shrink, you know, the ceiling clouds a little bit to gain back a little bit of budget for flooring, or whatever it might be. So that's, a lot of that, those small changes, they get handled just in design, it's the large changes, hey, I forgot to say, I need, I don't know, an extra room, I, you know, something that got left out.
Hopefully we don't go down that road.
Those are the kinds of things, like, oh, hey, can we get a, I don't know, an indoor batting facility for the baseball softball complex? You know, those are the kinds of things that kind of make sense.
I just, you know, I watch Fixer Upper every weekend, and Chip will always find some, you know, some, those things you have to do, right? I have to do this, and this extra cost, so I think he explained that very clearly.
I mean, we talked about that in one of our pre-meetings, and we decided, well, we're not going to pick a number.
Yeah.
But if you think about it, over $14 million, 7%, if that was on each project, that's a million dollars. So, you know, we're going to leave it with the professionals, that they're going to manage it, but I think we want to know if we're starting to talk six digits across all the projects, the board needs to know.
Yeah, well, and I mean, we have to empower that project leadership team, right, to make big decisions, so that's fine. I just was curious.
Great question. Okay. All right, but we're going to dive into next steps, okay? We're on our last item here. So our next step is, of course, to set up meetings with this group and to start this design refinement process within this next handful of weeks, okay? And sooner than later is the target. So that's our next immediate step. Conduct site surveys, site building investigation, soil borrowings, exploratory pre-construction activities. We've already started that. There's some guys and gals poking around the schools over these past couple of days, measuring, taking photographs, you may have seen them. So we've done that, we've ordered, we're getting proposals for soil borrowings and site surveys and for, to study the capacities of the soil and water infiltration capacity of the soil, things like that. So we've already started that process. We'll speak relatively quickly with governing authorities, whether it's the city or utility companies, things like that, so that's on the docket. Any other next steps that this group or anyone else wants to throw into the pot, or that, that's what we're going to be doing immediately, but.
No?
Okay. So we need to arrive at some dates for our next meeting. I don't know, is, since we all, we have you all here, we're just going to ask, right? Is it better to meet in the evenings, or during the day, or on weekends, or, or we might have to do like some sort of monkey survey?
During the day, that's a survey.
I'm sorry, survey monkey, not monkey survey.
Can you ask them, if they're projects first, do they just come back to you?
Yeah, yeah. So what am I, what am I charged each leader of each team is to, is to speak with your team members and arrive at a handful of dates within the next, I'll say, two to three weeks. I'd like to have at least two or three, even four potential dates that we could then receive. We say, yep, that's going to work, and then we land on it, okay? So if you can do that within the next, I'll say, handful of days to a week, that would be really valuable to help get that, get that work in preparation at time. Oh, okay, good, good question. If we could allow for 90 minutes, that would be a good target. We're going to finish before our 90-minute target here tonight, which is good, but if you can allow for the 90 minutes, that would be helpful. What we want to do is review in relative detail what the board approved as part of that Phase 2 milestone, and then we want to share with you the different parts and pieces that we need input on, of course, and then we're just going to kind of hash it out, what do you think is best, right? So that could take a little bit. Some of the groups, I don't, I'm not anticipating this, but hopefully we don't have to go to three meetings total, but anyway, we'll talk about that as we dive into each group. So, okay, so your charge is to arrive at a handful of days for each group, each team, and then send that back to me, and then we'll get something organized.
Maybe we could have Mike or Andy just shut the door and lock it until we get on. We've got to answer a few minutes. I mean, I would seriously take the opportunity, maybe right now, because almost everybody's here, is to figure out some opportunities when you can meet with these teams and then work if we're done with it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But you want to open it up for questions, too.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So we threw a lot of information at you tonight, a lot of things on paper, on screen, just discussion points, do you have any questions, or even, yeah, it could be anything. On budget, or process, or?
I guess I have a question on design.
Okay.
You have the document in front of you there on the table.
Yeah.
That's, my understanding that is just kind of been a rough show of what things could look like, correct?
Yeah, let's, we'll choose our terms very precisely, rough, maybe is too loose, but it's provided the framework, yeah, for moving forward, okay? So we're, we think that we've landed on, in terms of number of rooms, size of rooms for the most part, even orientation and adjacencies of rooms and spaces, we think we've got that If not, then we'll have to talk about that, but we're hoping that we can use this as a stepping off point for that design refinement. But you're right, so this represents the Phase 2 board workshop approval, and actually have that slide if you do want to, if anybody has any questions on what that is. But you're right, I mean, we're using this as the framework for continuing the further conversation. We're hoping to not have to go backwards from this document that was approved that last fall, and that was representing of what the bond referendum vote was on, right? Does that answer your question, Vic?
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the layout of the classroom edition, but I think that's something we can discuss.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have the opportunity to still to, in this particular instance, can we move the art room on the top floor and classrooms down low, or do? You know, I, there's still some room for that, okay? Or the size of the tech room or the voc ag room, we can do some squeezing and moving around, so.
So maybe one thing that would be helpful on thinking about some of the similar questions, is it possible to get an agenda of what you want to discuss at those meetings ahead of time?
Sure.
So, I know we meet next Wednesday, so to have an idea of like, what kind of things should have already been sort of thinking about prior to coming?
Sure, okay, we should, we might even be able to have electronic copies of each room data sheet that we're going to be discussing for each specific room and project area, done well before that meeting, kind of what happens, so we can send that, so we can kind of start to see what are some of the things that we need to fill out. And then we'll also have probably a list of questions to go through there.
Good, good question.
I have one other question. So it would like the high school project to be multiple areas, would you like to meet with each of those individual groups, or are you talking still one large?
Yeah, I think, I think each individual group needs that hour and a half.
Five, three.
Probably art, voc tech, and yeah, music, and yeah, and baseball, so it's actually kind of four.
Well, as per, as per how we have it listed here, Vic, if you want to, if you want to break it down even more, yeah, yeah, good point. So we have the voc tech lab separate from the other edition, and then we have the fine arts edition that is separate, but we do currently have the two gen ed classrooms, art room and rear tech lab as a singular group. But if you're thinking that we need to, that's going to consume three hours, then maybe we should break that apart. I'll, maybe I'll leave that up to you, Vic, to offer some additional detail there.
All right, thank you.
And we might need to, you know, for the high school, it might be one, two, three meetings right in a row, some evening or afternoon or whatever, that would help us, right, to try to consolidate some of those meetings, one after the other, but we also want to make sure that we're available to what your meetings are, okay?
Thank you. We know you all have very full-time jobs, but the project leads will be really important, and I think it's a great idea, Stacy and Vic, Mike and Amy, just to reach out, and Tim from the sports, but reach out proactively before your meetings and get as much information as you need. We're going to, we don't want to spend a lot of your time, but I mean, you are the key drivers for that, so get the information ahead of time, work with Hala and story. If there's questions, like what you raised, Vic, get those clear, so you know what you're dealing with when you do meet, so that's, you know, ahead of time, we're going to thank you for putting in over and above as the school year is ending. Good questions, good stuff. What about other questions from the staff or community on the process or timelines? Pretty straightforward, Claire? Exciting? I mean, I think it's pretty exciting.
Look at them.
They're excited because we might get out early. No questions? So I seriously would encourage you to try to meet as your project team or get, you know, I know, Vic, you've got several of them, but see if you can land on some times right now, because you've got community members that may not work during the day, and see if we can get those lined up for these teams to work with. And you're basically wanting to target by the end of May?
Yeah.
When does school officially gym hours?
That's if we don't have any more snow days.
Oh, damn, oh my goodness.
David, you jinxed us. Just kidding, I mean, well.
You're right.
So end of, before end of May would be ideal.
It's like, I don't even know anymore.
Go out of, out of the meeting? So moved for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.